Hours a day looking for it on the Internet. And it's nowhere to be found. I can't find no history of it. I don't know who created it, why it was created. I know nothing at all. And there's only three places that I know in the city that it flies. In front of this building, Pearl City, and at the airport. Why is that? Yeah, but, you know, I'm just saying. But that was my question. And if somebody could give me some paperwork and explain all the stuff, I'll send you a copied email later so you'll know what I'm looking for. I'd just like to see it and hear it. I don't understand.
Thank you, Greg. I'm-
Can we do that afterwards?
Can we? Can you hang on a minute, Mr. Miller? Just one minute. Are you done?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Your Honor.
Greg, I don't want to keep you up there in the catbird seat the whole time.
I expected to be here.
I just, I had a couple of questions before we turn it over and let the audience come up. The city, as you know, has taken a step back so that we can take more, more look at this. We haven't heard much from the other partners. Have any of them taken a step back as well? Or have they embraced this with open arms and are now using it like the Chamber is?
I think you'll, I saw Power Water Calendar yesterday that had it on. And I understand that the Crossroads folks used it last week. I think the college is using it some. It hasn't, you know, there's not a full-blown rollout taking place by any stretch of the imagination because we want to take a thoughtful approach to this. And where we, limited funds that we have, where will we spend those? So-
I didn't realize Crossroads was one of the partners.
Crossroads is not one of the partners, but Jim Hayes, who used to be with Trinity and at the time was-
Is that the Crossroads now?
Yeah, is that Crossroads.
Oh, so they now have accepted that?
They got a license agreement. We're trying to have the discipline to the license agreement even for the new brand. And so they came on and they, I think it was in the paper today, or maybe it was the Voice yesterday for their thankful, for the event they had over the last week or so?
Yes, yes, the carnival. Thank you, Greg. There may be some more questions.
Will be. Thanks.
So, and I think there was a little bit of confusion on whether or not the public would be allowed to speak today. And I know it's very important to council that we be able to hear what you have to say. And so that, I apologize for what was written in the newspaper. I still haven't figured out where that came from. But that, putting that aside, I would, we would like to hear from you. I would like to ask you and to, to set some parameters on some of the comments that you come up to make. In the interest of fairness and time allowance for everyone to have an opportunity to share their voice, I would ask that everyone please keep their comments to three minutes or less. At the two and a half minute mark, I will give you some kind of a notion, some kind of a nod or, or word to give you a heads up that two and a half minutes has expired. That way, we are fair to our neighbor and give them an opportunity as well. I would also like to ask that, that it doesn't do us a lot of good to have everybody, excuse me, come up and say the same thing. So if you're going to come up and talk, we very much want to hear your comments and what you have to say. But please make sure that there's something different than what the person before you just said. If you don't have anything new to add, it would be best to sit out this time. So we will ask you to please come up, one at a time. If you have something you would like to share, please state your name and address and address council if you wish. Mr. Miller, you would like to be first.
Well, I-
You don't want this to count into your three-minute timeframe? Is that what you're saying?
Right, I just want to ask, answer a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
But first of all, I'm Robert Miller. I reside at 2436 Sunflower Ridge, Muscatine. And I'm co-chairman with Jane Dolfeld in regard to the Citizens Committee for Retaining Pearl of the Mississippi. To get to your, one of your questions was, was the Pearl of the Mississippi was developed when Jim Nippel and I were chair, co-chairs of the Main Street Program in the 1980s. That slogan, that tagline was started in the Main Street Program, which was not a part of the city. It was an independent of downtown business people trying to upgrade building facades. And we decided within the Main Street Group that we needed some kind of a slogan or tagline. So it was started without cost, without fanfare, and people started buying into it. There wasn't a bill of sale. There was no money exchange. But I think Jane probably has a better idea how that transitioned and grew naturally when the Chamber took it on to kind of control, I guess, the application of that slogan so that it wasn't misused. So that being the case, we have myself and three other people that have prepared statements. But you've got to realize that our prepared statements are based on what we have experienced to date in dealing with this issue. And so some of the presentation that's been made here in regard to taking a step back and looking at ways to improve or include Pearl of the Mississippi and the development of the logo and tagline is new to us because we haven't received any kind of a communication from the seven stakeholders that they were considering this. So-
You mean that they were considering incorporating Pearl of the Mississippi into this new?
As I understand it, yes.
Okay, so you weren't aware of that possibility until-
No, so I just want to make sure that our prepared statements are based on not knowing that information tonight. So, but again, that's one of our recommendations is that we jointly work on this together to try to find a way to keep the inclusion of Pearl of the Mississippi somewhere in that new information. Okay?
So the prepared statement that you have, please, please make sure to keep it under three minutes.
We have, we have timed all of our statements.
Yay.
And made sure they don't duplicate.
Could I also ask, are any of them ones that were provided to us last week?
Either new.
All new?
All new.
Wow, you're on it.
You were on it.
You've got the podium then.
All right. I think Max Churchill is our first speaker.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Churchill.
Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Please state your name and address. We already got your name, but you can go ahead and do your address.
Got to, got to tell me how to do it.
Oh, that's all right.
All right. Thank you very much, the council. I was on the council, you know, when we entered the century. And, and so I'm just kind of glad to get back. I've been involved in portraying muscatine personalities. Yes, that's true. I decided to appear at this meeting to tell you how important it is to keep Pearl of the Mississippi. The legacy of your pearl button history was salvaged in the early 1980s by a prominent tagline. We looked at all of these things and a prominent local bank vice president, he must have entrusted historical records that he provided for a plan to tell our story, starting with the Button Museum. Dick Stanley provided the first home for our infant pearl button museum. While we were there, there was two letters between them and me answering the call, and we sent several pieces of machinery to the Smithsonian Institute, and they said it would be another year or two before it's brought back. And that's, that's what happened. The Muscatine Pearl Museum is the number one tourist attraction in Muscatine. Did you get that? The number one. That really is very emphasis on what's going on. The Great River Road, many tourists travel the Great River Road. Are you aware that Muscatine is also bisected north-south, east-west by a circling route that intersects in Muscatine? What happens to the tourism that is generated by dropping the Pearl of the Mississippi tagline? We drop our ability to promote a destination location that is known for its national uniqueness. Ownership of the Mississippi is not important. We found that out in 1811 down here at the end of Illinois. And when that happened, the river ran backwards. I don't know why it did, but it did. So you've got to kind of keep these things in proportion. Ownership of the Mississippi is not important. Well, it sure is. You've got to take the city and the chamber abandoned the Mississippi. Then she turned over to a new owner who will carry the brand forward. All of these things is part of our program. We don't want to be angry. We want to work together on this. And we think the Pearl of the Mississippi because we've got five pieces out here of rock that we got several years ago, manufactured in Dubuque, Iowa. And it was brought down here. They're, they're heavy, they're, they're very expensive. Take a look at what's on the bottom of that the next time you, you see one of these. It'll maybe be shocking to some of you. Thank you for your time. And I think the next speaker is my friend, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Churchill.
Mayor, I need his address.
I'm sorry. Mr. Churchill, we didn't get your address.
Oh, they didn't get your address?
Just shout it right out. We can hear you.
I feel like I'm from Germany. My address is 404 Parkington Drive, Muscatine, Iowa.
Good enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Beveridge, and I live at 1416 Mulberry. I was born and raised in Muscatine and educated in the public schools before going away to college and graduate school. Some of the buzzwords we hear with branding a community, our logo, tagline, our DNA, and stakeholders. We've been told that seven stakeholders want to brand our community and want to tell us who we are, our DNA, and how we should identify and/or brand ourselves. We already know who we are, and we do not need outside stakeholders, or as they were just recently called, partners or consultants to tell us. And the council members are elected to hear our voices. Many of us were born here and others have chosen to live here. We are the residents, the citizens of Muscatine. If anyone owns the pearl, it is the people, the residents of Muscatine. Yes, we are the real stakeholders here. We feel we should be given a voice, and here it is. More than 500 people have signed petitions to keep the Pearl of the Mississippi as our Bill Baker, an expert experienced in the branding business, perhaps some of you are familiar with the work, with the book, Destination Branding for Small Cities. This is a second edition. He writes, "Some places come to the realization that their tagline is outdated, boring, and without meaning." He goes on to say that, and I quote what he wrote, "Many taglines are simply examples of marketing speech or cliches that do nothing to advance the identity of a place." He writes, "I like straightforward, descriptive taglines that never stop working and don't need to explain their meaning, that capture the essence of the place." We in the, in Muscatine have that already, and that tagline is the Pearl of the Mississippi. It is straightforward, descriptive, and it captures the essence of Muscatine. It is unique. It is what identifies us, and it is what brings so many visitors and residents to Muscatine. We think you should read this book before you proceed. Perhaps you know it already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Beveridge. Please state your name and address.
Jane Dolfeld, and I live at 2223 Fifth Avenue. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our story is not unlike the 1849 gold rush. In our case, however, it was the mother of pearl that beckoned thousands of people to the Midwest in the 1850s. While others headed west, many immigrants settled in and around Muscatine because of the growing pearl button industry. Muscatine became known as the pearl button capital of the world because 1.5 billion buttons, basically one-third of all the world's total button demand, was manufactured right here in Muscatine by the 1905. The pearl rush stretched out to 19 states regionally for raw materials, with Muscatine being the epicenter for industrial innovation and mechanization. John F. Buppel, the Berry Brothers, and many others chose to start businesses here on the banks of the Mississippi River. The clam shells and button blanks were harvested from various rivers around the Midwest and shipped here to Muscatine by rail and barge to be turned into a symbol of wealth. No more animal bones or horns. It had to be pearl buttons. We have symbols of wealth as our historical foundation to market Muscatine. Our history should be promoted, or we will become just another river on a bend in an unnamed river, or just another town on a bend in an unnamed river. I ask you, what happens now to the existing entry signs to Muscatine? We literally have Pearl of the Mississippi set in stone. The signs were a leadership Muscatine project that was completed by donations raised by the late, in the late 1990s and completed in the early 2000s. The final three entry stones were graciously and at no cost delivered to Muscatine by Tantera Transportation and set in place by Bob's Crane Service. Over the past 15 years, we named initiatives to improve our amenities using the pearl name. Pearl Projects 1 and 2 funded the following, the following trails along the river to the Weed Park, the Mississippi Mist, the Mississippi Harvest Statue, the Muscatine Aquatic Center, all with nods to the importance of keeping Pearl of the Mississippi. Most recently, Pearls of Progress funded trail extensions to Deep Lakes and Discovery Park, building cabins at Deep Lakes, a dog park, and partial funding for the Musser Public Library's new location. St. Louis is always exploring. Los Angeles is the city of angels. New York is the Big Apple, and Muscatine is the Pearl of the Mississippi. The pearl button industry became the seed pearl to our current industries, many of which are world leaders in manufacturing, engineering, technology, and food processing. Even H.J. Heinz, which is over 100 years old, located here in Muscatine, keeps their tagline, 57 varieties. Keep Pearl, keep Pearl of the Mississippi because of the intrinsic value a pearl represents to our future. Thank you.
Good evening. Please state your name and address.
Michael Baxter, 1599 Vale Avenue, Muscatine.
Go ahead.
I've been listening to the meeting tonight, and my interpretation is the city council and the chamber want to promote development of the community and more revenue coming into Muscatine from increased business activities, which that's fine. I mean, I think you ought to do that. But I don't think you should tamper with the Pearl of the Mississippi name of Muscatine, which is your, is the essence of your city. You don't want to tamper with that. I moved here 30 years ago from a town on the Mississippi River, Vicksburg, Vicksburg, Mississippi. And I lived there for over 15 years. And I lived in New Orleans and worked on, worked on barges on the river in New Orleans. And I operated a marine industry here in Muscatine, Iowa. My kids went to school here in Muscatine, Iowa. And if the river wasn't here, I wouldn't be here. And you want business here, we're here. Don't, don't, don't pace this out. We want to, we want to stay. We want to grow here. And we're proud of the Pearl of the Mississippi. And the, the people that work on the river, you, they associate Muscatine with the Pearl of the River. And for them to go by here and not see the Pearl of the Mississippi, it's like the town's dying. I mean, that's just what people on the river would, would say. I am a river man. I've been working on the Mississippi River for over 40 years. And I'm different than some other people that don't make their income and livelihood off the river, but I do. And that's my suggestion to you. There was, there was another version where there were some words that say, where the river takes a turn for the better. My comment on that is you're telling people to stay away from Muscatine. Don't come here. Just think about it because if I'm on a flotilla on the river and I'm going down river and, and the river takes a turn for the better when I leave Muscatine, what's that tell you? Get out of here. The same thing if I'm on a flotilla and I'm going up the river. If the river takes a turn for the better when I'm going upriver from Muscatine, that means I'm doing good getting out of here. And I just don't want you to shoot yourself in the foot. And that's all I got to say. I mean, I, I would like to conclude that 100% of what Mary Beveridge said, I would like to repeat, but she already said it.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Hi.
Good evening. Go ahead.
I'm Chris Clark, and I live at 2429 Longhurst Court, Muscatine. And I learned something coming here tonight. I learned there's a difference between the logos and the difference between the taglines. Frankly, I wasn't expecting this, but I haven't seen that logo yet. And I like that logo. Being a quilter and an artist, that looks a lot like my work. So, but, and, but being a quilter too, it's kind of like the river's important, the sides are important, all the pieces that we have in town are important. And, and it seems to me that what you want to do is promote the importance of all those pieces. So I like that logo. But I also like just you keeping the tagline, the Pearl of the Mississippi, because in one word, pearl, you're telling me that this is a very valuable place. And you're telling me that I can take all those pieces with that picture and put all those pieces together, the business, the industry, the schools, all of those things, and put them together in one place, the pearl. And that's all I have to say, just pearl. And I've got that vision of something beautiful and something clean and something valuable in that one word. So it, it bothers me that take the river taking a turn, it doesn't do anything for me. I mean, and I came, I was born here, so, you know, my grandmas, my aunts and uncles, my, my dad sweat buttons at the button factory. My grandma's carted buttons. I have buttons in my house all over the place, you know, and, and I use those pearl buttons. But it's, so, so those things are, you know, there's that image of it. My husband and I have traveled extensively in Iowa. We did 1,800 miles in, in nine days on a bus trip, and we never left the state. Every town in Iowa has some unique feature that makes them different from every other town in Iowa and makes them special, and they look for that. My gosh, we've got the pearl as being our tagline, as being what, what gives us that vision of something beautiful. We could have lived in Valisca, where they're famous for the axe murders. Or we could have lived in, I dare, where Jesse James used to hang out. We, but we don't have that. We have the, you know, the whole pearl button industry. I think industries are going to come and go wherever, no matter what your tagline is. They're not going to care. Who really cares about the taglines are the small businesses that, that attract that, you know, outside tourism and everything and have something. And we know that because look at the riverfront. Everything that is down there, we were driving through there the other night with my husband, and I said, "Look at this. Everything that's down here screams nostalgia, you know, antiquness, you know, just the, the flavor of that Pearl of Mississippi." And we've already invested a lot of money in that. So I'd like to see both of them. I, I think that actually could be a very, you know, I never knew that that was a sunset before on the, you know, on the, on the other logo. So I'm guessing, I'm not, I don't have any, you know, attachments to the logo. I do like the word pearl, though. And I love that logo.
Thank you.
Because, you know, just the way it goes together.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Anyone else?
I'm back.
You're back.
Uh.
Time starts now.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to cut my comments short too because of the fact that some of my comments here are somewhat critical, and I don't want to present those because I sense a feeling from the stakeholders that they would like to work out some kind of a compromise. And we've already presented them with, three weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago now, a compromise which really we hadn't received any response to. So I would just like to suggest to the council that our recommendation, as you received in your packets, was to not endorse, adopt, and support the new tagline without the inclusion of Pearl of the Mississippi. So with that, I thank the council and the mayor for your time being able to express our committee's view. And believe me, we did not have to go out and do much gathering of signatures. People were calling, saying, "When, where can I find a petition to sign?" And in some places, we had only one petition, and the people signed the whole front and the back. So I think the community feelings about this is very, very evident, which you've also felt too. So we're wanting to work out some kind of a compromise that keeps the Pearl of the Mississippi.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
My name's Roger Landy. I live at 515 West Second Street, right close to downtown. In fact, I'm one of the few people I know, other than my good wife, Sarah, who's lived in the same house for more than 50 years. In any event, I came down here tonight for a purpose, but I'm not going to, I'll repeat it, but I will not speak to that purpose. I came down because the paper said there wasn't time for public debate. And I congratulate the mayor for recognizing what a dumb decision that has, but it has deprived me of the opportunity to say, "I want the people or a person who made that decision to address me and tell me why they thought it was a good one." Because public discourse and debate is where the American democracy comes from, and I, I applaud you. A couple of other things. I applaud the sense of the session and can add to it one of my loves for the river, which I have deeply appreciated living here these many years. But I began to, but I read a lot about Muscatine in the early decade or two that I was here and know something about the history. And I was always con- And I was always confused by the Mark Twain description of the beautiful sunsets. I drove, I drove east on every west-facing road in the county looking for that beautiful, extraordinary Midwest sunset. And in the late seventies, I had finally gotten, uh, enough funds to have a boat on the river for a few years. And I came down and I looked back at what I'd read. Lock and Dam sixteen began construction in nineteen thirty-three. It was completed in nineteen thirty-six. Prior to then, the big summer holiday was Geneva Island, which is up past the old prime mover plant, uh, uh, four or five miles. And it was higher and larger than any other islands. And you go back, when Gil Beach used to read the, write the old histories in the newspaper, he spoke about the picnic's and the Sunday, summer holidays and the houses that were built on it because it was such a great place to go in the days way before Ebon Rouge. And, uh, the, uh, it was, and I've been in that area in my boat and come down. And when you come down the river, you're going west. And the sun sets in Lock and Dam Pool sixteen. And, uh, Mark Twain obviously went to picnic's. Anyway, I, those are the kinds of things that lock us into August Buple, the Bapple, that cut his foot on a clam shell and invented the buttons.
Thank you. Thank you. And I, I do apologize again for those that, uh, read the paper and thought they wouldn't get in a chance to speak and so didn't attend tonight or didn't prepare something to say. So again, I apologize. Ma'am, please state your name and address.
My name is Grace Steckman. I live at sixteen oh four Foster Street here in Muscatine. Uh, I just wanted to say, I look at that picture up there and I think, well, is that a Picasso or? And then you talk about where the river takes a turn for the better. And I thought, well, they're a bunch of snobs. And then I think, well, the river's running through the middle there. Now which side of the river is Muscatine on? And to me, it's very confusing and does not enlighten me much about Muscatine. And I do know that when I look at that other logo, I knew right away it was a sunset. And it always makes me think of Samuel Clemens saying about our beautiful sunsets. And, uh, I, uh, Muscatine is unique in that it does have the pearl button industry here. And Austin, Minnesota is unique because Hormel there is there and the Spam Museum is there. And people come to Austin, Minnesota so they can see the Spam Museum and that's the only thing they have. And so I think we still need to keep the focus on what God has blessed us with and that's the Pearl of the Mississippi. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Roger Roth, uh, Clark House. Uh, will the Chair, uh, Chamber Congress Chairman yield to a question?
Uh, you can go ahead and ask it now and then after we're done, I'll ask him to come up.
What was your logo for the Pearl of Muscatine? Is that, is that the logo?
Was there a logo attached to the tagline? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We'll get him to answer that when he comes back up. How's that?
Okay. If that's what it is, you gotta remember also, we have truckers that have their own logos for different cities. It's like what they were saying earlier, the Big Apple, Chi Town, and so on. That automatically identifies the town. When the lady said, "The Pearl," short, sweet, to the point, and that automatically defines Muscatine. It doesn't have to go all that lengthy in relation to people identifying what you're looking for. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Sally Flatland at three thousand five, uh, West Foleum Avenue.
Could you spell your last name?
Oh, Flatland, just the way it sounds.
Just the way it stands.
Yep, yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to speak from the perspective of a new resident, about a year and a half. Moved here from Arizona for a job. And so unlike all the long-term residents here who have invested a lot of time, I, I, I think about the time when I got my job here and I was moving. And I look online and I, I remember seeing Pearl of the Mississippi. And, um, it's catchy. And it made me look into what, why is, what is that name? Why is that? And so then you learn about the history of this place. I can't imagine looking up where the river takes a turn for the better and wonder why that, what that, what does that mean? You know what I mean? So it was really catchy for a new person coming to town. So you have to think about bringing new people in and, and what that, um, might mean to them. So, and also the, the, uh, "River Takes a Turn for the Better" to me has a very negative connotation. Just like, um, uh, I don't know his name, but what he mentioned earlier about, you know, get out of here kind of thing. But also just, it reminds me of the, you know, "takes a turn for the worse" saying. And so that was, that's what comes to my mind, is that saying when I hear that. So to me, it's just a negative connotation.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Anyone else? Greg Jenkins, do you mind coming up and, and answering Mr. Roth's question? And we'll see if council has any more for you. So Pearl of the Mississippi, the tagline, is that associated with your logo? Is it tied to it?
It has been, yes.
It has been? Council, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm just a little curious. One other thought, you know, the reason why I asked those questions in the email, which I've already forwarded to you. I was doing some research on Wikipedia, trying to figure out about the flag and this whole issue. You know Wikipedia shows Muscatine, Pearl of the Mississippi? I'm like, interesting. So that's why I'm asking. How do you get, where the intellectual property got shifted? How, and Wikipedia says, "Where the Pearl of the Mississippi." Okay. That's all I just wanted to share that thought.
I think it's always been, and perhaps I'm wrong, but, uh, commonly accepted for a lot of people to use that line, that tagline in the community.
It is, and.
And you've always allowed that?
Well, we, many people do come and get a license, we use, or, yeah, for a dollar. And so they sign an agreement and they show us what they're going to use it for. And they pay us a dollar and we let them use that.
Okay. Councilman Brackett?
Yeah, I've, I've had strong opinions on this from the beginning. I know when it was, yeah, you don't need to stay up there. Uh, when it was first showed, when I was, when I was first shown this marketing campaign, I had reservations about it. But I also recognized all the work that had gone into creating it, that there was multiple stakeholders involved. And I was willing to set aside my personal feelings on the logo and the tagline to move forward with that. Um, that being said, since that time, the community has overwhelmingly mirrored my feelings on the logo and the tagline. Um, I do like the concept that was mentioned earlier of using Pearl of the Mississippi in combination with something new. Um, I don't feel that the bend in the river is, is, the way that that is, that phrase turns doesn't sit well with me at all either. Something along the lines of Pearl of the Mississippi, you know, where opportunity flows or something along those lines, I think, would be great. In that addition, the logo though, I, yeah, I, I have to, my, my frank description of it is that it, you know, it really feels like, uh, I don't know if you know the phrase, uh, a camel is a horse designed by committee. I feel there's a lot of good ideas, a lot of good intentions. And a lot of debate has probably gone back and forth about the logo. And I feel that that logo is the culmination of those things, but it's not necessarily the product that it should have been. And so that's, that's my stance on it, just to be very clear.
Councilman Harvey?
Yeah, I was wondering, uh, if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the logo and the tagline?
Besides you.
Besides you, yes.
Did you have more comments?
Yes, I did. Quite a few.
Okay.
Uh, the original, or as it exists now, the stylized sunset, you know, when I look at it, to me, it looks rather anemic for a logo. Uh, because if you just present that logo by itself, much like that one, by the way, but if you present it by itself, you, you know, is that a top of a picket fence or what is it? And, uh, because there's no color to it. And if you want to associate that with a beautiful sunset, it certainly doesn't convey that message. And Max may disagree with me, Max Churchill, that. But that quote from Mark Twain is sort of taken out of concept. Because if you read the entire preceding part of that quote, Mark Twain is talking about visiting Muscatine and going for a walk and being held up at gunpoint. And he goes into that quite extensively. And then he says, "Oh, by the way, I also remember Muscatine for its sunsets." So it's kind of a rhetorical, almost, type of a quote. And when I first looked at that logo, I didn't particularly like it either because, again, standing by the new proposed logo, uh, standing by itself, you wonder, what the hell is that? You know? And I'm not a graphic artist or anything, but, you know, if, speaking about the Pearl, if they could put a Pearl on that bend in that river, at least it'd locate, kind of visually locate what we're talking about. You know, it's that spot on the river. And, uh, I don't, as kind of a compromise position, I also agree that if we could, you know, keep that logo with or without the Pearl on it and use the combined tagline, Pearl of the Mississippi, or if we want to change it slightly, Pearl on the Mississippi, uh, and then where the river takes a bend for the better, at least it's identifying Muscatine, where we're at, what we view ourselves as being the Pearl on the Mississippi and taking a, uh, where the river takes a turn for the better. By the way, when I first looked at that line, I agree with the, uh, the comment that, my first impression was, huh, are they saying when you leave Muscatine, going to bend either way, you're, you're getting better? It's better to be up in Quad Cities or it's better to be down in Burlington? So I think that tagline by itself is, was rather non-complimentary, depending on how you interpret it, you know, what it meant. So if I, I'm, we're not voting tonight, but if I had my choice, we would maybe keep that logo, but incorporate, definitely incorporate the tagline, Pearl, Pearl on or Pearl of the Mississippi. And then you could include, uh, where the river takes a turn for the better. That's my comments at the moment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, it sounds like we're going to hear some, or at least get to see some other options back. They're going to look at a couple of things to add Pearl of the Mississippi to that. Is that what we were told earlier? Yes. So I think we'll be waiting anxiously to see what they come up with.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just had another thought. Part of what, uh, North Star did was conduct a lot of community sit downs, you know, what's good, what's bad about Muscatine with a lot of people. But I'm not sure who selected the groups that they're talking to, but they, they didn't seem like necessarily an ordinary citizen. But they spent, what did we spend? Over thirty, over thirty, forty thousand dollars on, uh, North Star? And they wrote quite a report about what they learned was good and bad about Muscatine. And then I guess the original intent was, how can we market Muscatine? Well, what they learned good and bad about Muscatine, how is that incorporated at all in that proposed logo and proposed tagline? It just, it seems like they were doing, interviewing for one thing and they came up with something that doesn't relate with what they were learning about Muscatine, with the goods and the bad. I thought they were going to tell us, here's what's bad about Muscatine and maybe you ought to be working on these areas. But that really was, seemed like secondary to using the new logo and the new tagline. It, it's like it was got lost and we're not going to take advantage of what they taught us that we, what changes ought to be made. And, uh.
I, I completely agree with you, Councilman. I, I was one of the people that was interviewed. And I think I was in an appointment for well over an hour. And we talked about a great deal of things in Muscatine that I thought were wonderful and things that could be improved. And, uh, I, I guess I never really got the impression that, that the final product was going to be a logo or a tagline, but that they were working on an entire branding piece.
When I voted for spending the money, I didn't, I had no idea that that was the end goal.
I understood it to be a whole new marketing branding concept. And I, when it came out, I also wondered, how did that fit into the hour, hour and a half that I sit down and talk to them? I, I guess I just didn't see where that tied in. Not that I agreed or disagreed with it.
That's all I had.
Okay. Anyone else? We'll put this to rest for the evening. I, I would just like to say, on a, on a personal note, I am pleased that they will be seeing, coming up with some type of a compromise that, that will help everyone. Um, I appreciated the comments that we don't want to be angry. We want to work together and have this be a successful thing for everyone. And the Pearl is important to me as well. My great-grandfather was in the business right here locally and my grandma's name was Pearl as a result of that. So it's very important to me also. And I certainly want to echo everyone's comments that they appreciate everyone coming out and taking the time and caring. You know, isn't that what we all want? We want everybody to care about our community and want what's best for it. And whether, whether you think we should have this or should have this, the whole point is that we all care. So let's keep with that. With, pardon me.
Your Honor, I was just wondering if we should read Councilmember Sauce Sato's comments into the record?
Sure. Go ahead.
What, I'll just go ahead. Uh, Councilmember Sauce Sato apologized for you being sick tonight and, and sent along some comments as well. So, um, and apologized for that view on tonight's agenda. After making a few calls and doing more research, I confirm that the Pearl of Mississippi logo is owned by the Chamber of Commerce, as Greg mentioned last week. When others want to use it, they have to obtain a license, even when MPW has to request the logo for the water tower. The city of Muscatine has their own logo and has continued to use that logo for most, uh, for the most part on city structures, that half star. Um, it is not the Pearl of the Mississippi logo. We all, excuse me, we as a city do not have to adopt the new logo. We can continue the current city Muscatine logo, but the discussion should not revolve around the Pearl of the Mississippi logo as the city does not own it and seldom uses it. Rejection and adopting, uh, reject, excuse me, rejection and adopting the logo does not preclude the current owner, GMCCI, from adopting it or for any other entity to license and use it, uh, as it is copyright protected by GMCCI. Too many of the, too many in the community, uh, the narrative seems to reflect the city of Muscatine decides the chamber logo, which has become the primary community logo and tagline over time. The city does not have that authority. Conversely, I'm not sure GMCCI want, uh, excuse me, does want to adopt it with the turmoil surrounding the subject. But that, that really is a determination to be made by the Chamber Board and their president, not by the council. I'm in, uh, I am and was in favor of the new branding marketing campaign when first discussed in 2015. Uh, they could have updated the Pearl of the Mississippi logo to modernize it, but believe the tagline, Pearl of the Mississippi, should be maintained. I open, I'm open to a hybrid of what Bill Trent had mentioned in last week's city council meeting of combining tagline as future outlook. I know and understand many people worked on this project and believe that the new logo, tagline, but this project has ended up needing much more input for an effort this big. Currently, I'm in favor of keeping the city, of keeping our current city logo. this big. Currently, I'm in favor of keeping the city, of keeping our current city logo, half star, and let the chamber and other groups use the new logo slash tagline as they choose. This is my view as of today's meeting, to be, as this is to be a consensus view. I did note that what a recommendation was about keeping the city's current logo, and just using the new logo and tagline in our marketing efforts, and that would work for Mr. Sausato.
Thank you. As we prepare to close out tonight's council meeting, I'd like to ask individual council members if they had anything that they wanted to share additionally. Councilman Harvey?
If I recall correctly, the, isn't the last second Saturday coming up?
It is. This coming Saturday.
Recommend that everybody get out to the last second Saturday of this year.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Malcolm?
Just a little note, reminder for council members, as known, that I do disaster services with the Salvation Army. And as you've been watching on the news, my wife and I are probably on standby to be deployed into the area for that. So soon as we know, we'll notify everybody else. But, you know, that's probably expected. And we just ask that you keep us in prayer while we're out doing what we do. Neighbors helping neighbors.
Thank you, absolutely. Councilwoman Brockert?
Oh, a couple things. If you go to second Saturday this Saturday, please bundle up, otherwise you wind up like Councilwoman Sausato. And then Riverbend neighbors will meet on Monday evening at 7:00, down at the South End Fire Station, and everyone is invited to attend.
Very good. Councilman Fitzgerald?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
You always do that.
He always does. Councilman Brackett?
All right. I had a few people comment to me about how I missed last week's meeting, and I just wanted to make sure people understood. I was pretty deeply involved in a friend and coworker's wedding, so I was not able to be here. I was pretty tied up most of the week, and otherwise would not have missed the meeting. The other thing, too, is this next Friday, not tomorrow, but next Friday, is the Over the Edge Event in downtown Muscatine, where there's a number of people. It'll be rappelling down the side of the Laurel Building on the corner of Second and Iowa. And it'll start at 10:00 AM, and goes through, I think, 5:00 PM, and 6:00 PM? Might be 6:00. Depends on how long it takes us all to get down. I'll be one of them. I don't know. I'll be one of the ones going down. If you want to see me scuttling down the side of the building, I think I start around noon. So, but-
Take you six hours to get down, or five hours to get down?
No, hopefully it takes me an appropriate amount of time, and not, yeah, not a quick drop. No, I, yeah, so I look forward to that. And it was, it was a fundraising effort for Muscatine Special Olympics, Muscatine Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and the Chamber ambassadors. So it's gonna do a lot of good in the community, and it'll be a lot of fun. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelsey, I hope it takes you longer than five seconds to get down.
Hopefully it does. You know, as long as I stop at the appropriate pace, it'd be fine.
You know there's a roundabout on your way down.
And I was smart enough to say no when they asked me would I like to do that. Staff, did you have anything?
Just a reminder to take a look at the notifications that have been going out on a daily basis regarding the flooding, enclosures, et cetera, on the city's Facebook page, and on the press releases. It's been changing about every day.
And I just had a couple of things that I would like to share. First of all, I would like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. As I said, it's our pleasure to have you be here tonight and share your thoughts and ideas with us. Next, I'd like to share, this is, every year, I have the pleasure of visiting with every sixth grader at Central Middle School and talking to them about local government. They come to see me here in groups of 20 to 25, and it takes me two days to get through all of them, because there's quite a group. Today, I had an appointment I couldn't possibly get out of, and I wanted to thank Councilman Brackett for stepping up. Did they treat you okay?
Yeah, there was, what I found out is that in a group that size, there's two to three students of that age that are extremely vocal, and then there's a few that fall, about the same number that fall asleep.
Had a couple of those. Had a lot of raising your hand.
Pay close attention. But, yeah, no, it was a good time. I really enjoyed doing that. And if you need someone to stand in in the future, let me know.
I will do that. I always get to wow them with the story about the bridge up here, because they always ask me, "Is that our bridge we have right now?" And I say, "No." But when I was your age, I got to walk down to the riverfront for our field trip, and watch them blow that bridge up, because we had a new bridge. And it was a ton of fun. And they're all like, "What kind of dynamite did they use?" And, "Is dynamite really a real thing?" They're quite a challenge, but it's our pleasure to do so. But, so thank you again, Kelsey.
You're welcome.
Next, I would like to share that we are saying goodbye and retiring one of our firefighters, Brian Wright. He's been a firefighter with our community for many, many years. And he is, has been hired as the emergency manager for Muscatine County. And so he's retiring from our fire department, and is having an open house on Friday, October 19, from 2:00 to 4:00, at the Public Safety Building. If any of you know him, and would wish to come and congratulate him on his retirement, and his new venture for the county, I'm sure that he would appreciate it. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. And hearing nothing else, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.